I'm asking. She had more than stairs, she was, so I think we don't have to worry about that.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, sorry. What? Oh.
I can't hear you.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah. Where's my one as well?
He was up here.
You're the idiot.
Talk with me back. He wanted to talk to you about the tax.
He's like, um, he started, you know, and I'm like, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. He was wanting to make sure.
Another game.
You know?
I know. What?
But, you know, we shouldn't be impossible. Thank you. Yeah.
Only now we could bring, uh, four, five, six. Oh, you're full of friends. You got a minute? Yeah. Uh-oh. I'm upset. Yeah. Good. Okay. All right, Jerry. Good evening. Welcome to the South Bend Council Meeting, March twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen. We will now have the invitation by Rabbi Derek Fleming, and he can come. She can come on. Uh-huh.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I want to thank Councilmember Valer Che, and the South Bend Common Council for the honor of giving this invitation tonight. Although I live in the Shewaka and my son has given Bafaro, I am honored to be here tonight. My husband and my son were born and raised in South Bend, and the Seferman family has deep roots in this wonderful city. The residents of the great city of South Bend should all be proud of the accomplishments that the city has achieved. This is a result of the involvement of many concerned citizens, especially you who volunteer of your time to serve on the common council for the common good of us all. Through your work on this council, you not only represent the citizens of South Bend, you represent the power of a caring community that is both proud of its past and works together to create a better future for all. I know how proud the Jewish community of South Bend is to be a part of this wonderful city. So tonight, I would like to offer a passage that I have adapted for this occasion from our Jewish prayer book. Blessed are God, the city of South Bend, those who lead in service and those who contribute to its strength. Be with those whom we have chosen to lead us, that they may strive to establish justice and opportunity for all, and labor to bring peace to the families of this great city. May your favor rest upon the city of South Bend, its leaders and residents, and let us say amen.
Amen. Thank you. I would like to give you the [inaudible] of Canada, and to the [inaudible] one information on three I. Thank you very much for the [inaudible]. And that's just my all. This time, I'd like to ask our committee question, Mr. John Vorty, please take the round. Oh, man. Mr. Henry Davis, ready to serve. Mr. Che. Vice President, Peter. President, Mr. Vorty. Mr. Hurley. House member White. President Oliver Davis. President. He's present. Okay, now we have our report from the subcommittees.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has expected the minutes of the March tenth, twenty fourteen meeting of the council, and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Signed, Oliver Davis.
Make motion to accept the motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. If opposed, it's inside. It is carried. Now, in a special boosters tonight, we have a presentation from Mr. Wood, uh, from the Jewish Federation of Saint Joseph's Valley. Could you please come forward and give us your presentation?
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm a little bit nervous. Um, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, Congressman Valer Che, for the invitation to be here, and thank you for the council for hosting. Um, I also want to acknowledge that with us tonight is Contemptive Director of the Jewish Federation, Mr. Ben Regis, and Rabbi Sean Seferman, and also my supervisor, who is the Community Relations Director, Mr. Val Seferman. My name is Israel, uh, I came from Israel seven months ago to work at the Jewish Federation of Saint Joseph's Valley.
Excuse me one second. Can we all hear if that microphone working out there? Okay. Could you check to see if that microphone is actually where the pedals are? Something's not. Maybe it's that one.
Um, this microphone, uh, can I just go down?
It's moving closer.
Nothing. Yeah? Okay, so, start over?
Uh, we can hear you.
Yeah, continue. So, I'm really hot, as I said, I'm from Israel. Um, I came seven months ago to work at the Jewish Federation of Saint Joseph's Valley in South Bend. As is my home right here, as is the picture, off of Chatalet, which is under that real site. Um, and here is a little writing about the Jewish Federation. Today, the Jewish Federation of Saint Joseph's Valley serves as the cultural center for the Jewish life in Louisiana, reaching more than two thousand Jewish people in Saint Joseph's and Alfa County in southwest lower Michigan. The Federation continues to serve the Jewish people locally in Israel and throughout the world through coordinating fundraising, community-wide programming, services, and educational activities. By the way, our events are open to entire community, and I encourage you to attend our upcoming Michigan Jewish Film Festival that will be held in Debartho in Notre Dame on May. My work is mainly with the children and youth of the community. We have a youth group called Sababa, which meets twice a month. Recently, we volunteered at the Center for the Homeless in South Bend. In addition, each week, I teach Hebrew in the synagogue, and also teach about Israel and my life and experiences as an Israelite. One of the things I appreciate the most in the Federation's work is that the board offers to the elderly community. We host two lunches each month, which has an educational aspect to it. I'm always amazed that the Federation also offers transportation solutions to the elders who can't get their lunches on their own. This is just one example of something great the Federation is responsible for. There are many other great things, such as working with the Russian-speaking members of our community and helping them learn English and support them with their needs. Since one of the goals of the Federation is to strengthen the Jewish community and its relationship with Israel, I'm here for it. My Israel story starts when my great-grandparents came to Israel eighty years ago, even before the creation of the States in nineteen forty-eight. They came alone with no family, with four children. They came before they were twenty years old. They came from Eastern Europe before World War Two, but from lands full of anti-Semitism, in order to build a new country, a new life for themselves and their grandchildren, like me. Israel was declared as a Jewish democratic country on May fourteenth, nineteen forty-eight, by David Ben Gurion. But even before Ben Gurion declared our independence, the Jewish population in Palestine had already numbered four hundred and fifty thousand people, among them my great-grandparents, who came from Eastern Europe, as they said. So they had a land, and they had a dream, and they worked very hard to make this dream a reality. Today, Israel is an island of sanity and stability in a very chaotic Middle East. In a few words, we live in a very, very tough neighborhood. Yet, Israel is the only close American ally in the Middle East that the U.S. can really rely on. Lebanon is controlled by the terrorist organization Hezbollah, which is a proxy of Iran. Iran and Hezbollah are providing massive support to the brutal regime of Bashar al-Assad, who has murdered more than one hundred and forty thousand of his own citizens. Iraq is in a state of chaos. Egypt is not a reliable American partner anymore. Although Bill Jordan is a friend of the United States, its government could be overthrown by ISIS. While America and Israel are so close, President Obama said, "The bond between Israel and the United States is rooted in more than our shared national interests. It's rooted in the shared values and shared stories of our people." Those same values include a commitment to democracy, the rule of law, freedom of religion and speech, and human rights are all what makes Israel the best and strongest ally for America in the Middle East. Both nations have similar histories. Both nations were founded by refugees seeking political and religious freedom. Both were forced to fight for independence against foreign powers. Both have absorbed immigrants seeking political freedom and economic well-being, and both have evolved into democracies that respect the rule of law, the will of voters, and the right of minorities. It is not well-known that twenty percent of the population of Israel is comprised of Arabs, both Christian Arabs and Muslim Arabs, who enjoy equal civil rights, equal access to Israel's world-class universities, and are represented in our parliament, the Knesset. Speaking of Israel minorities, we at the Jewish Federation are very proud of our partnership with one of the most ethnically diverse places in the Middle East. It is called the Western Galilee, that has a mixed population of six hundred thousand Christians, Muslims, and Jews. One example that I want to tell you about is Goto Masad Valhoub, the Director General of the Western Galilee Hospital in Nahariya, and he is also a Christian Arab. About six months ago, he visited South Bend, and in a presentation at our Federation, he gave a very interesting response to a question he was asked about how he has been treated as an Arab in Israel. He said that if you are a minority living in the Middle East, the best place to be is in Israel. I think that this sentence speaks for itself. The bond between America and Israel not only lays in the values we share, it also has a strategic and economic sense to it. It is no secret that Israel and America both desire a peaceful Middle East, yet they also face common enemies of peace, like Iran. We see the buckets in joint strategic planning. We see it in the sharing of intelligence, intelligence and joint military training exercises. Most importantly, is the fact that Israel military innovations are helping to save American soldiers' lives and Afghanistan every day. Another major asset of the great relationship between America and Israel is the growing economic cooperation within the two nations. Many American companies seek to invest in Israeli high-tech plants. Also, several of the American biggest high-tech companies like Google, Facebook, and Intel have major research and developing facilities in Israel. Of course, Israeli companies also invest in America. The Sabra Brats Foods that many of you enjoy is thanks to an American-Israeli partnership with two production facilities here in America. The last important thing I want to talk about is peace, or in other words, solving the Israeli-Balstinian conflict. Ever since nineteen ninety-three, and the signing of the Oslo Pact by Prime Minister Rabin, may he rest in peace, Israel has always reached out for peace to our Arab neighbors and supports the two-state solution. I hope that with the great help of U.S. Secretary of State John Kerry, we will find a solution to the conflict, a solution that for one, for all, brings peace to Israel. I want to finish with one story that can give us all hope for the future. As we speak, on the Israeli border with Syria on the Golan Heights, Israeli military doctors and nurses are providing emergency medical care for wounded civilians. Now keep in mind that we are still officially at war with Syria. My grandfather fought in two wars against Syria. Yet the government of Israel has rightly decided that it would be against our values not to provide medical treatment for wounded civilians. As a citizen of Israel and as a former soldier in the Israeli Defense Forces, this makes me very proud. But a medical treatment does not end in an Israeli field hospital on the Golan Heights. Hundreds of the wounded Syrian civilians have been transported by the Israeli army to hospitals in Israel for advanced surgery. One of these is the Western Galilee Hospital in Nahariya that I mentioned earlier. One Syrian who brought his granddaughter for medical treatment in Israel said, "When there is peace, I will raise an Israeli flag on the roof of my house." And again, this speaks for itself. Thank you very, very much for the opportunity to speak and talk.
Thank you for your presentation, Jerry. And thank you all for coming to be here. We have now, representing the city administration tonight, is Chief of Staff Captain Ruth. Um, we don't have any reports from the city office tonight, but we do, before we go into our committee as a whole, have a note from our city attorney, uh, council attorney, who would like to share her thoughts.
For the committee of the public, in a few moments, she'll have, uh, our citizens to read, uh, [inaudible]. Firstly, there are two [inaudible] errors. Under the, here in the hall, everything that will be ordered under that [inaudible] public hearing will not [inaudible]. And everything under [inaudible] [inaudible].
Thank you. Now do I have a motion to dissolve to committee as a whole? Second. Second. All in favor, say aye. If opposed, just next to it.
The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council sits as a committee. Proposed ordinances are read by title only by a city clerk to unboard. Reports are then verbally given by the chairperson of the council standing committee to which the proposed ordinance was sent for an advisory review and recommendation. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member of the area plan will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report, and the formal presentation followed by a public hearing. We ask that everyone turn off their cell phones and other electronic devices during this portion of the meeting. Additional rules governing the committee as a whole are set forth in the brochure available on the desk up front, so please feel free to help yourself if you would like a copy of that. I now ask City Clerk John Vorty to read.
[inaudible] first items, uh, bill number twenty-two, that there's been a request from the petitioner to continue to [inaudible].
Someone?
Second. I have a motion and a second. All votes in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Uh, bill twenty-two fourteen will be continued until April twenty-eighth.
I'd like to make a motion to continue eighteen fourteen to April.
Fourteenth, as a request of the petitioner.
Yes, I do. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, all votes in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Bill eighteen fourteen will be continued until April fourteen. Clerk Vorty, if you please give a second reading to bill nineteen fourteen.
All votes in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed. Bill eighteen fourteen will be continued until April fourteen.
Clerk Vorty, if you please give a second reading to bill nineteen fourteen.
All votes in favor indicate by saying aye. The common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and [inaudible] operations in twenty fourteen of one hundred and six thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars from Century Center Capital Fund, number six seventy-one.
The Personnel and Finance Committee met earlier today and sends bill nineteen fourteen to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Uh, do I have a presenter?
John Murphy, City Controller of the Office, on the sixth, twelfth floor. This additional appropriation ordinance is for Century Center, appropriates one hundred and six thousand six eighty-four, fifty-four thousand one eighty-four for smaller kitchen repair items, fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars for repairs to the main freight elevator. Funding for this is a contribution from SMG, the new management company received in the summer of two thousand thirteen. So there's no, uh, property tax or other tax revenue used for this appropriation. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Counsel, are there any questions at this time? Seeing, um, uh, thank you. We will now open this to the public. Um, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of bill nineteen fourteen? If so, please come to the podium. Okay. Um, seeing no one, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to bill nineteen fourteen? Please come to the podium. Seeing no one, I will bring it back to the council.
Favorable recommendation, second.
I have a motion and a second. All votes in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Bill nineteen fourteen will go to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Uh, Clerk John Vorty, may I please get a second reading on bill twenty-fourteen?
Publicary, no one, bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers with various departments within the city of South Bend for the year twenty fourteen.
Uh, thank you. Um, the Personnel and Finance Committee met earlier today and sends bill twenty-fourteen to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
John Murphy, City Controller of the Office, on the twelfth floor. Uh, this is a budget transfer ordinance, no additional appropriations requested. In Indiana, we have a requirement that transfers between office, cabinet, personnel, supplies, services, and capital must be included by the council. Uh, for two thousand fourteen, in the past, we've, um, brought these forward to you twice a year, mid-year, also the end of the year. This year, we thought it would be proven that as your request, we're bringing it more frequently. So we're going to bring it during March, July, and December, we're going to be these types of transfers between, uh, two years. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Judge. Counsel, any questions on this bill?
No.
Uh, none. Um, thank you. Um, I will turn it to the, um, audience now. Uh, are there any members of the audience wishing to speak in favor of bill twenty-fourteen? If so, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, um, uh, are there any members of the audience wishing to speak in opposition to bill twenty-fourteen? If so, please come to the podium. Okay, um, seeing no one, I bring it back to the council. Are there any [inaudible]?
I would just like to congratulate the controller. I appreciate you bringing it to us at least three times a year in Washington, because it helps us to be able to, um, [inaudible] all [inaudible] together, beginning with or at the end of the year. So I want to thank you for following through with our recommendation. So, thank you.
I, uh, thank you as well.
Excuse me, was that the old controller or the new one?
Same [inaudible].
Thank you. Um, are there any, uh, further comments? Do I have a recommendation?
No, it's a favorable recommendation.
And motion and second, all votes in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, bill twenty-fourteen will go to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Uh, Clerk John Vorty, may I please, uh, will you please read substitute bill twenty-one fourteen?
Publicary, no one, the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations in twenty fourteen of forty-one thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars from general fund one oh one, seventeen thousand one hundred dollars from gift donation request fund, number two seventeen, two hundred and forty thousand five hundred dollars from central services fund, two twenty-two, eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars from CMS capital fund, number two eighty-eight, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand sixty dollars from police grants fund, number two ninety-two, and two hundred and seventeen thousand eighty-three dollars from [inaudible] income tax fund, number four oh four.
Thank you, Clerk Vorty. The Personnel and Finance Committee met earlier today and sends bill, uh, substitute bill fourteen fourteen to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
John Murphy, City Controller, with offices on the twelfth floor. Uh, there are a number of additional appropriations, uh, [inaudible] funds, the non-incorporated funds. We had a good discussion this afternoon at the committee meeting. We had department, as the fiscal officers there, that explained additional, the different appropriation items. Won't repeat that tonight, but, uh, wanted to ask any questions.
Thank you. Help from the gears?
Yeah, we'll start, um, because we ran out of time. The first, the forty-one thousand, how is that coming back? What does that have to do with?
The forty-one thousand nine nineteen. That was actually, that's our three funds, Memorial Hospital. We actually [inaudible] [inaudible]. [inaudible].
Yeah. So it really was. It really was in person for it.
It's for you.
Basically.
Ladies and gentlemen, the counsel, Stephen Cox, Fire City South Bend Fire Partner. We're under obligation through contract with Memorial Hospital for, uh, providing a driver for the [inaudible] truck, a transporter rig. Uh, basically, what, the once we've collected above and beyond one hundred and thirty thousand dollars in, in, in the year, uh, anything above and beyond that one hundred and thirty thousand dollars by contract, uh, goes back to Memorial Hospital. This is actually the first year since we've engaged in this program, uh, for about thirty-two years, I believe, uh, that we've actually eclipsed that one hundred and thirty thousand. Um, and so by contract, we are obligated to give them back anything above and beyond that. So we collected, I believe, a hundred and seventy.
Hundred and seventy-one thousand.
Hundred and seventy-one thousand, uh, for the calls that we, that we, uh, play on next year.
Okay. The, the, what was the reason that we were able to collect more, then?
Uh, I couldn't tell you that one hundred percent, although what I can tell you is our billing office, what we have done, we, we instituted several changes in our billing office, and as, uh, Mr. Murphy mentioned, we have very good [inaudible] collections. Uh, we were able to collect, I mean, universally in all of our, all aspects, from Medicare, Medicaid, uh, maybe [inaudible] everything, they have all been on the upside as far as collections go, so.
Okay. Was that something that at some point needs to be revisited, if, if we're going to continue doing this well, but?
Absolutely. However, I want to be on a caution, uh, in thirty-two years, this is the only year we've actually eclipsed the one hundred and thirty thousand mark, so.
Okay, if you don't, what happens?
Uh, then Memorial basically makes up the difference between whatever we collect and the hundred.
Okay.
So in the past, we've collected a hundred and twenty-four, and they bring versus for six thousand to make up the difference, so.
Who, who does the work for the collections, the city?
Uh, yeah, we, our billing office does all of that.
Okay.
Um, although, we also [inaudible].
I understand that, but if, if you guys are going to be doing the fine work you do, and your billing does the great work, I don't understand what Memorial's going to get. and your billing does the great work, I don't understand whether Memorial's going to get a piece of the pie, I guess, if it would, so.
Well, that's been a longstanding contract, of course, and it's a agreement of the council.
Okay. Well, it needs to be reviewed?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Uh, I'll go to the next question, Mr. Controller. On the, uh, is, is the, the gift and the donations, are those anonymous, or goes someone?
Typically not anonymous, uh, we keep track of it in our office.
At some point, uh, just, why would I, if, uh, you can get a list, because I'd like to thank, because I don't know who donates to the city, so I'd be more happy to write a letter of thanks to the, if it's private individuals, businesses, or so on and so forth.
We can send you an account summary of, we kind of, we keep track of the things.
Okay.
Strictly.
All right. The, uh, now, the, uh, $138 for the police grants, what is that?
That's a grant that the, uh, police department has with the South Bend Street Corporation. I don't know the, all the details, but we receive the cash for 2013, but it's a pass through grant to those of the school corporations, so we have to reimburse them for that.
Okay, is that for the resource officers, or do you know?
It's called the Secure Our Schools Grant.
SRO?
Secure Our Schools Grant?
Cessolus.
That's, that's the name of it.
Cessolus.
I don't know, I don't know the exact, but it's, uh, reimbursement for the schools. We've received our money until mid-late 2013.
Okay, I'll find out from, uh, from, I've never heard of it.
I have two more questions. Um, Dr. Sherlock and then, uh, Henry Davis.
I just wanted to say, see, well, it was because of the paramedics this year. Memorial had the best year they ever had because of the paramedics. Before that, they were doing the city a favor. Now they're, now we're giving them a favor, so we'll renegotiate that contract if they're consistently going up bill.
Thank you. Um, thank you. We will now provide our guests an opportunity. Uh, is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of substitute bill 2114? Please come to the podium. Seeing no one, is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to substitute bill Please provide your game analysis.
Mr. Davis, P.O. Box Control of South Bend, Indiana. I guess I'm not really in a proposition, but, uh, along with Mr. Davis, I was curious, uh, you know, some of these questions he'd asked, if the public should be answered before they made transfers, where the money comes from, and if that public record, where we can go on the website, look up like gifts and donations, uh, if they can't give that information to Mr. Davis, is the public allowed to get that?
And Mr. Murphy? Uh, we bring this back to the council. Mr. Murphy, would you please, um, provide an answer for this deal?
We keep a summary of the donation fund, so I think that would be a public document if you were to do it. We keep it very specific, because there are certain donations for animal control, certain sort of the bicycle program, sort of for code enforcement, and they're not there. I mean, we keep a very strict accounting information, but we do it. And we also provide a report, Angela believes, to the council, so we can have a report.
Thank you. If you have any further questions at this time? Uh, do I have a motion?
For favorable recommendation of substitute 2114.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, substitute bill, uh, 2114 will go to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Do I have a motion to, uh?
So the second after whatever was.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
We use a check, Mr. Jackson.
Do I agree with that?
Huh? I told this father. I told this father. Councilor, Dr. Sessions. Mr. Murphy, would you give a third reading to bill 1914?
Third reading, on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in 2014 of $106,684 from Century Center Capital Fund Number 671.
Introduction. You have a second? You have, um, move foot out, or second?
We're actually looking with the passage.
Passage. Passage adoption.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Scott. Hi. Mr. Henry Davis. Uh, Mr. Che.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Vice President Peter.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Councilman White.
Aye.
President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
That's the DA, aye.
Thank you. Now, would you read third reading for bill 2014?
Third reading, on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana for budget transfers with various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana for the year 2014.
Move for passage.
Sir, would you please take the round? Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Che.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Vice President Peter.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Councilman White.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Scott.
Aye.
And President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
Thank you. Please read, um, bill number 2114.
Third reading, on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city service operations in 2014 of $41,919 from General Fund Number 101, $17,000 from Gift Fund Donation Request Fund Number 217, $240,500 from Central Services Fund Number 222, $830,000 from EMS Capital Fund Number 288, $138,060 from Police Grants Fund Number 292, and $217,083 from County Option Income Tax Fund Number 404.
Move for passage.
Motion to abandon, consider, let's, let's.
So the motion, second.
All of those say aye.
Aye.
All of those say the same sign.
Move for passage. I'll do the version.
Second. Mr. Murphy, could you please take the round? Mr. Che.
Aye.
Dr. Furley. Vice President Peter.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Councilman White.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
And President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
So it is seven to one.
Thank you. Now, as we move down to our resolutions.
Resolution 1424. Thank you. Revolution, we are discussing the protocol of the revolution technically, certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana. I'm running around this 237 North Michigan Street as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a 10-year real property tax abatement for Great Lakes Capital, the L.
Thank you. Um, would like to have a committee, confirm any questions? Um, we have a presenter.
Good evening, President Davis, members of the full council. My name is Rich Deal from Martin Bloomberg with offices at 100 North Michigan Street here in South Bend. Please to join you, as you recall, a couple weeks ago, we had, uh, a longer discussion regarding Great Lakes Capital, proposed investment of over nine and a half million to assist the city with targeting the former LaSalle Hotel to rehabilitate that into approximately 60, uh, 60 apartment units, together with first floor retail project. Uh, this is a significant project, a taken asset that has historically been owned and by the City Development Commission for many, many years, and has been an asset that hasn't contributed to the tax base of the city for at least over 10 years, and to make this a productive asset while also meeting objectives and plans of central business district to increase living and cooperation and patronage of businesses here in downtown South Bend. Uh, this is a, a project that will result initially in, uh, in at least nine new jobs at the project, representing payroll of $315,000. And, uh, overall, will have representatives of likely in the hundreds, 40, 160 range of contractors working on the, uh, the project, uh, through its, uh, through its construction phases. Um, as the council is aware, this is a request for a 10-year abatement that deviates slightly from the traditional 10-year phase-in schedule, and there are many features that the council, the city have considered, uh, toward this project, with regard to these exceptions. The primary ones include a, an investment in, uh, in property that has historically been a liability to the city for maintenance costs, to turn this project into a tax-producing, uh, contributing property, uh, as well as this is a property that has a historic designation and suffers significant cost of less, it's not a, it's not a project that's readily, uh, and immediately convertible into a productive asset, for that's a significant, uh, adjustments made to make the property sustainable for future development. Uh, those are the key, the key aspects, uh, you know, that separate this project from some, some other, uh, other, uh, multifamily housing projects that have come before this council, which makes it a somewhat unique asset. I'm happy to answer the questions of the council, and again, we greatly appreciate the council's consideration for this.
Are there any questions at this time from the council? All right. There are no questions at this time, so now we will open up for public hearing. If those would like to speak in favor of this resolution, please come before their mic and share your thoughts. Seeing none, if those would like to speak in opposition, please do likewise. Do you have how many minutes? Five minutes?
There's a new one named George, who's ran our, because of the progressive work with industry, says that 1:25, Mary Williams. I, rising in opposition, not to the tax evasion plan, but the way that the process has gone up to this point, we, uh, we grabbed that tax evasion application, and we found that, uh, Great Lakes Capital had indicated that they had a affirmative action plan. Uh, we were concerned about their affirmative action plans as minority, kind of hard type of change, like that, and the voiding of the, we stopped being. We found our community of effort, there's no one verified that they actually had a plan. Uh, we think that's an issue. We think that we should, we, we're not trying to impugn anyone's integrity, but we live by the axiom just for verify. We believe that it's totally in the interest of the city to ensure that there's an affirmative action plan intact and in place that, that can be implemented. So for that purpose, I, I'd like to help you see that table, and to such, that Great Lakes Capital shows you that a perfect plan.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, hearing none, um, you are free to please, uh, give a rebuttal regarding the question that was shared.
Sure, I appreciate the opportunity, President Davis, members of the council. With respect to the, uh, the abatement application, as the council is aware, the council considers a number of years of abatement based on the corresponding point schedule. Uh, one of the, one of the points, you know, was points allocated to this project, uh, for, uh, for electing or selecting engaging contractors that have affirmative action plans in place. Uh, as the council is, is aware, this is a project that, uh, is also subject to a development agreement with the redevelopment commission that requires there to be, uh, a broad base, in essence, advertising, public bid for engaging contractors. Uh, under the, uh, under the abatement ordinance, the ability to achieve, uh, a affirmative action plan is, is a goal or objective to, uh, to have a level playing field, to broaden the field of applicants in order to, uh, ensure that there is diversity, uh, in, in those that are engaged in the, in the jobs. Uh, and in this project, um, I know Great Lakes Capital is, uh, is planning to work with the Michigan Building Association, Quozo Hidden Organization, as well as to provide with all the terms of the development agreement, uh, to, you know, publicly post the, the, uh, the job parameters in, in order to, uh, receive as, as many bids for evaluation as, as possible. Appreciate the council's, um, our council family. Were there anything else that would need to be done to address that matter? Yes, Mr. Deal, uh, mentioned, there is a memorandum of, of agreement. There was, um, requested by Councilman Henry Davis, and he's provided, he's, he's very consummate as well as the development agreement, and it does, um, uh, break some, uh, just obviously.
Okay, thank you. Yes, um, questions? Let's start all the way from our far end, and then you come, um, council, turn back.
Um, I just want to, like, I create plates for the investment, and taking a dormant building in our downtown, uh, turning it into something, and revitalizing, and taking it off the city, uh, responsibility.
Thank you. Counselman Davis.
Thanks, sir. Um, thank you. Thank you for providing that, that piece of information that I asked for, I was not trying to be extremely critical of it, but when we're using taxpayer dollars, when we're supporting a tax abatement, and all of the findings, and we use incentives, uh, I think it's highly incumbent on us to make sure that it's a public benefit, uh, sometimes it comes back in a way or a form of, you know, uh, minority contracts, uh, donations to certain organizations within the city, et cetera. Uh, one thing that I'm, I'm really nervous about, and I, and I supported it all to this point, so you're going to have my support, but as we move further on this, uh, matter, I, I want to make sure that this becomes part of the policy. Um, obviously, we have not been very good at, uh, defining exactly what we're looking for, that's why it seems to be a lot of, uh, level, the clarity that we're looking for is not there, it doesn't exist. So as we're moving forward, uh, and I've been on this conversation for, since I've gone to council, that these things begin to take root, obviously, they have with this particular, um, uh, development, and hope that we see something different, um, while folks are working on, um, the structure of this building. But in all of the projects that we have that are assisted with government subsidies, because that's what we're giving out, some subsidies to help support prior development. So, uh, I would say thank you, uh, for your time, um, and, and I'm looking forward to seeing, uh, something better on the corner of LaSalle and Michigan Street.
Thank you. Counselman Che.
Sure, thank you. Hi. This is the, uh, the, uh, Doc Ford. Is this, Scott is my name. So, um, we've had several discussions, and obviously economic development is a multi strong approach, and so we're all very excited about this development, I think it'll bring a lot to downtown, but, um, to address the concerns that Mr. Travas has brought forward, do you feel that, um, through efforts, collaborative efforts in terms of job training, free purchase chip type of programs, um, and maybe initiatives that we have both now in place, as well as, um, maybe things that we can develop in the future, we could get to a point, um, here in the state where, uh, when we're talking about diversity, inclusivity, that, um, we will have a level playing field, and when we talk about making sure that everybody has a chance to participate? Do you think we're there yet, or is there work still to be done?
There's absolute work still to be done, and we're looking at programs, as we mentioned at, uh, at the previous council meeting, the Smart Workforce Initiative, which is underway, created 48 scholarships with, um, uh, through council action, uh, to help those who find jobs, jobs that already exist. So a big part of this is, is defining that problem, understanding what exactly, what are those barriers to economic opportunities, and then creating the right program to help, uh, help people get it into place. There's absolute work to be done, see, we absolutely look at that, look at the pictures, and want to find ways to create more opportunities. Obviously, a big part of that is job creation, right? So job creation helps create those opportunities, but we need to look at the side, expand on the, where they look.
Thank you. And, yeah, I think that, um, possibly, uh, how and in the future, we can hopefully bring more people in, um, so that everyone has an opportunity to participate.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Furley? Well, thanks to Great Lakes, and I'm going to be saying thanks a number of times tonight, uh, to trusting in South Bend, bringing the job to South Bend. I know you could have gone east to Mishawaka, or Algarve, or Middlebury, and all those cities, and you've taken an interest in South Bend, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice President. Thank you for your investment. Counselman.
Thank you as well.
All right. Thank you, and thank you for listening to the concerns and share. Thank you. Now, do I have a written message?
Sir, Mr. Morty. Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Vice President Peter.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Councilman White.
Aye.
Mr. Todd.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
President Davis.
Aye.
He aye.
Thank you. Now for bill number 1417.
A resolution of the county council of the city of South Bend, naming certain areas within the city of South Bend, commonly known as 3201 West Calvert Street, an economic revitalization area for purposes of up to eight-year real property tax abatement for Noble Americas South Bend Ethanol LLC.
Can we have a motion to accept this?
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything?
Now, I want you to hear a substitute bill 1417 with 1425 for purposes of public hearing.
Second. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
1425. A resolution of the county council of the city of South Bend, naming certain areas within the city of South Bend, commonly known as 3201 West Calvert Street, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Noble Americas South Bend Ethanol LLC.
Can we have a committee report from community investment committee? So you heard Mr. Ferl.
Sure, the community investment committee sends both these words with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Now, can we have a presenter?
Good evening. Great building from Department of Community Investment, 14th floor. We bring before you the resolutions for Noble America Ethanol LLC, the new operators of the ethanol plant here in South Bend. As we discussed earlier in the committee, this is a unique, these are unique resolutions that we're bringing before you today. This is the situation where when we were negotiating for them to purchase the ethanol plant to become the new operator, the plant was then assessed as personal property for the purposes of taxation. Upon completing the purchase and acquisition of the plant, and after beginning to make improvements to the plant, the assessor made the decision to reassess the property as real property. The presence of the building permit certainly adds a component to this in that the ordinance, local ordinance says you cannot pull the building permit in order to receive a real property abatement. Members of the Department of Community Investment, in consultation with Kathy Stansky, Karen, we had given them permission to pull the building permit because it was formerly personal property at that time. So what we're asking for is we're asking for both an exemption to the ordinance and the issue to the real property abatement up to eight years, and in addition to that, the approval of a tax abatement on personal property for up to five years. Noble Americas has been a great corporate citizen thus far, plans to invest approximately $32 million in the ethanol plant to bring it back to state-of-the-art facility, which would certainly be here for a long, long time. In the event of the personal property tax and the real property taxes, the same abatement are granted today, we know that the company is doing their due diligence now, economic forecasting to determine which would be of most value to the company in the long term. And the plan is that at that time, they will choose to accept either the real property abatement or appeal to both the assessor and the state assessors to have it reverted back to personal property. In the event it is kept as a personal property abatement, total taxes evaded over a five-year period would be 102,000, total taxes paid would be 105,000. If it's, I'm sorry, yes, if it's a real property abatement, total taxes paid would be, or evaded would be 1,562,000, total taxes paid would be 4,443,000. Total number of jobs to be created are 50, with a guaranteed wage between $25 to $27 now.
Our council attorney, are you comfortable with the shared thing? Do you want to add to that?
Yes, for the past several weeks, we've been almost on daily contact with regards to making sure that all of our eyes are down and the heat is across from us, so that both options are moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from council members at this time? From my right, from my left, my right. Thank you. We have comments before we close, I'll respect that. All right, now we move to our public hearing. Those in the public who like to speak in favor of the resolution, please come forward. Those who like to speak in opposition to this resolution, please come forward. Seeing none, the public hearing is not closed. Can now move to comments from the council members. Starting with Councilman Scott.
I want to thank you for your investment. One thing, Chris, I want to note that we have a meeting going forward once this gets turned on. We had a sewer issue with the old ethanol plant, not so much the water issue that Councilman Davis had to deal with, sewer smell happening in the second district and the first district, and I want to make sure that we have those meetings and talk about it. I did first subject with Dr. Varner in the Utilities Committee, but I want to make sure that we're all on the same page moving forward with that. But I am supportive and appreciate the jobs and the investment in South Bend.
Councilman Davis.
Thank you. I'm supportive of this action because of what's going on with it. However, I'm a bit unhappy with the process of what a tax abatement, just saying how it's being utilized. There is some discommunication, misunderstanding on my end. However, basically, I'm reading what's going on in the house, either being structured. I'm a bit unclear and really unhappy with it. So right now, I'm reluctant to, you know, say yes, but I am going to say yes to it. But we need to really change some of the ways that we're defining who is what, how to get it, and so that it suggests an outlook for the city and just not necessarily a data-driven approach to any more jobs and expanding our tax thing, because we may be losing out more than we're actually gaining. We may be spending a lot more and getting very little back, and that's one of the conversations that we had earlier today. But we have my support of this one, not your fault. It's just a part of some of the things that have taken place for a number of years that I've, you know, got to this point. So I'm looking forward to a subcommittee meeting that they put them off, so we can have, you know, a very, very nice discussion about how this is going to work.
Thank you. Councilman Shay.
Oh, thank you.
Say, decide?
No. I'd just say thank you to Noble Americas for their investment, and also thank you to community investment for being faithful. I know the assessor's office had, you know, originally said this was personal property tax, and then when he went back to them, they said, no, it looks like it's going to be real property to reassess the property. So thank you to you for being flexible and for getting this thing moving. That's great work. Thank you.
I would like to say this has been a long time coming, a long process. Would like to thank councilman Oliver Davis and others who have really worked very hard to ensure that this particular facility would be in a position so that when we did have a buyer with that company, that we have an interest. And not only do I appreciate the private investment that the city has invested as well, and the outcome is that not only will that plant be put back into operation, but individuals who've been without work will have opportunity. So it's a win-win for all of us, and just thank you for all the hard work, and that we are now seeing the results.
I echo Councilman Roy's comments of being a win-win because of the fact that we have now been in a position where we have already worked to have wells out in the area, and now we have jobs coming in the area. So both situations can be totally fixed up, and it's being done at the same time, which is a great benefit for those, for the whole city of South Bend, especially for those who live right around the carpet areas in six districts. So I'm very thankful. It's welcome home.
Move for adoption.
Seven.
First, substitute bill 1417.
Move for adoption. Second. Mr. Roy.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Ferl.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Ferl.
Aye.
And President Alred.
Aye.
Move for adoption of 1425.
Second.
Mr. Roy.
Mr. Ferl. Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Ferl.
Aye.
And Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
And President Alred.
Aye.
He aye.
Now, Mr. Roy, could you please read resolution 1426?
A resolution of the county council of the city of South Bend, naming certain areas within the city of South Bend, commonly known as 1902 West Sample Street, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a two-year real property tax abatement for woodwork, components, manufacturing, and.
Thank you. We have a community meeting this afternoon, and Mr. Ferl, would you please give us that report?
Sure, community investment sends us forward a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Now, the electorates into the come up. 1426, resolution.
Good evening, community council. Chris Dale, Department of Community Investment. We're pleased to bring before you a resolution for a two-year vacant building tax abatement under state code 6-1.12. This has been another long time coming as a town in the white of the state. This has been a true partnership between IDBC, the Chamber of Commerce, Great Lakes Capital, Holiday Corporation, and certainly the great entrepreneurs and futuristic thinkers that have had difference in your industry. So we bring before you a two-year tax abatement for the real property. Total taxes evaded would be 696,000 dollars. Total taxes paid over two years would be 40839 dollars. Total jobs committed to be created during that two-year time period are 200. Total jobs committed to be created over a 10-year time period are 380.
Any comments? Any questions? Yes, questions?
Was this tax abatement necessary or for this? Absolutely, it was. They're tax abating in addition to the noble tax abatement. These are conversations that are had months, and sometimes three to six months in advance of them ever making the decision to do a facility or buy a facility, and no time would a tax abatement just, oh, you're, you're, you are to lease the building, we'll just give you a tax abatement. These are incentives that we utilize to attract them and incentivize them to enter into the deal.
Well, I might hold back, but I was wondering, in fact, if they show up and say, in order to show, come here, if we need a tax abatement, or if they show up and it's okay, this is what we can offer you?
No, they specifically on this facility especially requested a tax abatement. It's interesting with the AJ Wright facility, former AJ Wright facility, is that the taxes are approximately 500,000 to 600,000, depending on what's the assessment for that year, where the actual advertised lease rate for the building was $1.95. So if you think about it, the taxes are almost as much as what they're paying, the potential lease on the building for the year. So it makes a huge, it's a huge factor in their decision to take that building off. If they didn't get the abatement, especially for the first two years, where they're going to rent for a certain number of months, why they're still ramping up, they're not even in operation. No, it absolutely was a huge factor in their decision to took these buildings.
Take it as a monotax that are paid is about higher than monotax that are funded.
Correct. And in this, in this situation, it's for two years, no longer than two years.
Yes. Yes, Councilman Davis.
Thank you.
AJ Wright still paying penalties to the city on it, right?
Correct.
How much do they still owe?
Approximately 354,000 dollars per year for 2022. Those both might be off.
In this case, you have to go seven years for me.
Seven years, correct. Also on this, prior to this, the deal, was there also an outstanding tax bill on that building that was waived?
Nothing I'm aware of. The building was bought at auction, so maybe the taxes prior to the bankruptcy auction that you're talking, that you're speaking?
Yeah, who, someone told me that? Where would I find that information of? There's like $500,000 worth of past previous taxes that were paid, were supposedly waived or?
Fract 84th floor, community investment.
Isn't that what the working, you got to speak up?
Fract 84th floor, community investment. In the, prior to the bankruptcy of Noble Americas, yes, at that point, her.
TJX.
TJX. I'm definitely, I'm sorry, I have to, I have to be confused. I'm not aware of any outstanding taxes for the TJX building. That was on that, the ethanol plant did, but the TJX building, I was unaware of any. And I did check the assessor's office for those things prior to, prior to processing any abatement down for the city council. You know, viewing, we checked that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman White.
Yeah, Chris, just a quick question for you, and it might be actually for City Controller John Muckey. The penalties that AJ Wright are paying, do those, are those paid to the redevelopment commission or to fund 227?
They're paid to the edit fund.
Okay. Thank you. And it's 365 a year? 365?
Yeah, so it's around 354 a year. When you edit funding, you know, it uses a lot to, the transfer is made to support the community and development operations, so that's how that works. But it goes to the edit fund.
That works. So BOSH also, because BOSH broke the agreement, I'm sorry, is that the same fund where the BOSH proceeds?
No, the BOSH funds, the primary dollars in that fund, we went to the airport tip fund. It was the extent of the primary, a lot of the money regarding BOSH.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, you got, Councilwoman Davis.
Davis, and then Councilwoman White.
I would ask, this question was asked in the committee meeting, and I don't know if it was answered or not, in regards to individuals have been asking when they can start applying for jobs, and do you have a timeframe when that would start and where would they go?
I'm not aware. Do you have representatives of Libra Components here?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just take your name and address for the record, and then share your thoughts.
My name is Sean Lewis, I'm general counsel for Libra Components, 3501 County Road 6 East, Alcott, Indiana, 46514. Comic Cell Media Finance, 3501 County Road 6 East, Alcott. Hey, thank you. As far as jobs, we're always having people apply. There's many different ways that they can now. We actually have an email address, which is jobs@lc1.com. They can apply to our website, they can apply in person. At Goishan, not at the new facility yet, we're still getting everything ready. But we have a human resources department down at Goishan, which is 1700 Chatham Drive. They can apply there soon.
Appreciate you, thank you.
Can, community open up CID? When people call in, can you just refer them to that information?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, now, are they, are they the other questions?
Yeah, this is for Chris, last one. I'll need to hammer you there. Well, go ahead, you're up here. There's 100 jobs per year, or 110, right? 180. 180 per year. And then we go to 300 by end of the tax abatement. If that number is not achieved, there are offensive associates.
Correct. There's actually, it's a twofold. I know Ms. Shea, Councilman Shea is also on redevelopment. So there is a redevelopment commission investment also on top of the tax abatement. So for the tax abatement purposes, every May, each May, the company is required to do reporting to both the county clerk and to the state to be eligible for the tax abatement. Should they fail to meet their committed numbers in compliance, then their tax abatement can be removed. In addition, for the redevelopment commission dollars that are being invested, the same clawbacks exist based on the amount of projected investment committed and the number of jobs created. Failure to meet either of those projections, the result in a fine of 2.5 times or 1.5 times our investment in the project.
Man, that's great. I'm only standing out on a flagrant record. Past practices have led me to believe that we're not as aggressive or assertive as we should be when those clawbacks are put in play, and we have not been. The usual answer is, the economy is bad. And so we don't need to penalize folks who have brought investment to this area because we have a national, because the economy is bad, or the economy is not doing well. And so those penalties are never put on the folks who need to be penalized.
And just for the sake of clarification, this is that, this is not just for Libra Components. This is, this is the same basis that we've entered into every single deal with every single employer in the last six months, and we will continue to use as a template of the program.
Thank you. Now we move to our public hearing. Those who'd like to speak in favor, please come to the mic, show your thoughts. Those who'd like to speak in opposition, if you're too likewise. Public hearing is now closed. Back of council.
Move for adoption.
Senator. Mr. Ford, would you please take the roll? Councilmember White.
I forgot, we're asking. Oh, yes, I'm in support, well, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Davis.
Hi.
Dr. Furlick.
Hi.
Vice President.
Hi.
Mr. Furlick.
Hi.
President Dollar Davis.
Thank you.
Eight ahs. All righty. Okay. Now we will have resolution fourteen twenty-seven.
Resolution of the county council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as five fifteen West Ireland Road, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year real property tax abatement for Lock Joint Tube LLC.
A motion to hear fourteen twenty-eight with fourteen twenty-seven for purposes of public.
Senator.
I'm thinking, say aye.
Aye.
Of those, the same time.
Fourteen twenty-eighth. A resolution of the county council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as five fifteen West Ireland Road, an economic revitalization area for purposes of up to a seven-year real property tax abatement for Lock Joint Tube LLC.
A motion to hear fourteen twenty-eighth with fourteen twenty-seven for purposes of public.
Senator. Senator. I'm thinking, say aye.
Aye.
Of those, the same time.
Fourteen twenty-eighth. A resolution of the county council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as five fifteen West Ireland Road, an economic revitalization area for purposes of up to a seven-year real property tax abatement for Lock Joint Tube LLC.
We have a community investment committee, and Mr. Ford, would you give us the report?
Sure. Community Investments sends both of these forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Now, presenter.
Thank you, President Davis, members of the council. My name is Rich Deal, from Marsup River, the office at one hundred North Michigan Street here in South Bend. Please join, I'm just looking to the controller of Lock Joint Tube to request your consideration and approval of the abatement tonight. Thank you for finally reading both resolutions at the same time, all described the projects together. This is a proposed investment of between one point one and one point five million in new real estate improvements, including a building of approximately thirty thousand square feet to Lock Joint Tube's facility on Ireland Road. This will create more, more space, as well as allow them to reconfigure some of their operations and process flows internally. The second investment is, is an investment of more than three and a half million in new manufacturing equipment, logistical distribution equipment, to enhance, bring on new product lines, and to allow them to enter new markets. As the council is aware, Lock Joint Tube is a steel tube manufacturer with business in multiple industries, including automotive, furniture, structural, construction, and healthcare. This investment will allow them to retain their one hundred and ninety-three employees that are on Ireland Road, with payroll of over ten point three million, and initially be able to hire and bring on at least six to eight new jobs, with payroll of between one hundred and ninety and two hundred and fifty thousand possible dollars. We're happy to answer questions the council may have, and appreciate your support.
Thank you. Starting from my left, any questions on the side? No questions at this time? We are now opening up to public. For public who would like to speak in your favor, please come forth. On anyone of these items, those who'd like to speak in opposition. Public hearing is now closed. Move for adoption of fourteen twenty-seven. Senator. Mr. Ford, would you please take the roll?
Senator.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Hi.
Mrs. Shea.
Hi.
Dr. Furlick.
Hi.
Vice President.
Peter.
Mr. Furlick.
Hi.
Councilmember White.
Hi.
President Dollar Davis.
Hi.
Move for adoption of fourteen twenty-eight. Senator. Ford, please take the roll.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Hi.
Mrs. Shea.
Hi.
Dr. Furlick.
Hi.
Uh, let's see, Vice President Peter.
Hi.
Mr. Furlick.
Hi.
Councilmember White.
Hi.
President, uh, Mr. Scott. Aye. And President Dollar Davis.
Aye.
Eight ahs again.
Thank you. Now we will move on to our first readings. Bill number twenty-three dash fourteen.
First reading on bill, with vacation, following described property, first east-west alley south of Tetherly Street, from the east right of the way line of Kegley Street, to the first north-eastern, southwestern alley, for a distance of three hundred and sixty feet more or less.
I move that bill twenty-three fourteen, go to second and third reading, and public hearing to probably, uh, probably vacation second.
Second. All opposed.
It is carried. Mr. Ford, could you have first reading for the bill twenty-four dash fourteen?
First reading on the bill, the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, limiting chapter twenty-one of the South Bend Municipal City, Article Four, industrial districts to include uses already permitted as a primary use, from special exception use subsection, and modifying Article Six overlay and special use districts, to add a new subsection, which will alter to the applicability of the northeast neighborhood development area, overlay zoning district to plan to develop.
I move that bill twenty-four dash fourteen, be sent to area plan.
Will you have a second?
I'll second that one. All opposed, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Okay, it is carried.
Yeah. She called me on first. These overlay districts, I can remember the last time we had, when there was a conversation about overlay districts, and then the district concerning certain people being able to wire property, you know, overlay, because it reduced the difference of income standards, if I remember correctly. This is the second time, third time, the same overlay district. I want to be able to go back into records before we have the hearing on this one, and find out whatever took place with that. I do remember that.
Six three, what happened, the last time on that thing?
Yeah, I remember that. I remember that.
About two years ago.
You said we were talking about transportation, and, and, and people who are already there are getting littered more because of being pushed up to another level, you know, with the housing stock that's in that area.
I know.
Yeah, that was a, a big issue. And then I have a conversation with last Mohammed, and just giving a couple more people that talked about transportation, and the same thing comes down to pipeline.
How would you guide them on that, 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 that capital, right?
Forward, right.
Okay, thank you. All righty, Mr. Ford, could you read bill twenty-five dash one-four?
First reading on the bill, mending the zoning ordinance for property located at forty-five twenty-five South Rennett Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one four, Council Endic District number six, the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Um, please.
I move that bill to be brought to area time permission.
Thank you.
Second.
All opposed, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. It is carried. And our unfinished business. Um, we have all those bills, and what would you like to do?
Um, I'd like to move that bill number zero eight fourteen, bill number nine fourteen, bill ten fourteen, bill eleven fourteen, bill twelve fourteen, go to the Zonia Exclamation Committee for second and third reading, on four twenty-three, two thousand fourteen. See, I'm signing on change today. Four fourteen, two thousand fourteen, second reading, public hearing.
Second. All opposed, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. What would you like to do with bill fourteen twenty-three?
I'd like to move that bill fourteen twenty-three goes to, yeah.
July, last day, please.
Uh-huh. Yeah, I think tax abatement.
I have zoning renovation. I'm sorry. Okay. Move this one to twenty-two.
Okay. We choose to be in the last, okay, cool. We're following for second and third reading, on four fourteen, two thousand fourteen.
All seven ahs. All opposed. All right. There's any new business to come for the council tonight? And I give that one, um, that is, um, it's coming Monday, yes? At five o'clock, um, we will have a executive session, um, discussing legal matters, coming before, at five o'clock, and then at the, um, the, um.
I can do it.
Party.
I took this coming Monday?
Yes, it's coming Monday.
Is that already been set?
That's what we looked at, is that gonna be?
Oh, I get that.
Everybody's telling you, we have to be set a letter, let me know, we can, in our list check. Now it's closed, session. We have to deal with legal matters.
I'll be, I'll be in Bloomington.
You'll be in Bloomington?
Mm-hmm. But go ahead, that's, you know.
You sure?
It's a majority, yeah, it doesn't matter, you know, if you got the majority, because it's a majority. I'll be in Bloomington, though.
Anybody else over here, anybody else, you're not gonna be able to make it either?
No. No evidence.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll clarify afterwards, and, and, and if, if anybody else has any concerns, let's look at that, but, all righty. Uh, any of the, some of us with that new business, Councilman Davis?
Yes, sir. She would put it in your mailboxes when you go back into the office area. I'm doing the South Bend Learn and Serve Challenge, two thousand fourteen, basically on the issue of concern about around the city. What I've done is I've been able to part with a number of organizations to offer more or less a way of youth to get involved, to get, hop, hop, solutions for violence. So I'm asking that youth, uh, between the ages of twelve and fourteen, twelve and seventeen, uh, come over to the plant, uh, short-term goes, well, long-term goes, solutions for violence. Uh, the winning team of six gets, uh, free concert tickets and a general ride to the concert for this particular venture, and then the second place gets, uh, free dinner, uh, dinner for six, which will be free as well. And also we'll be able to use some of the information to, up with our city of violence that's going on, but also engage youth in trying to produce a positive outcome for, for their city that they live in. So that, that's one thing that's going on right now. I've, um, put it in your mind so you'll have more information on what's going on and what it looks like, and if you attribute that, we'd be interested if you wanted that and put that team together for six, uh, you know, in this, this woman. Uh, the winners will be announced on the fourteenth permission date in the eleventh month, next month. The permission deadlines, uh, April letter, deadline, deadline's permission is April letter, and the winner will be announced on the fourteenth. Uh, also, I wanted to make sure that, you know, um, there's a question about, uh, the jobs that are coming in. I don't know how we're gonna qualify all of these positions being given to the folks in South Bend, but when we are doing these tax abatments, although a certain company may bring in five hundred jobs, does not mean five hundred jobs in South Bend. And so the last gentleman that was here, God bless him, in their investment, but basically in its first place, it sounds like that they've already taken applications, more so probably in the Elkhart area, uh, for jobs that come open in the Elkhart area. Naturally, those folks who are applying for those jobs that are in wait minutes from the Elkhart area will probably get first ditch for the jobs that happen wherever. Well, this time will probably get to South Bend. So my question, again, is how does that look for folks in South Bend, and is there a preference that's given to people that live in South Bend, uh, given the fact that South Bend is subsidized and some of the costs to move those companies to South Bend? If that makes sense?
Makes sense.
Because we do, and say, well, we got five hundred jobs in South Bend, we're growing, well, not necessarily if people in South Bend are not employed with those jobs. So it, it doesn't, it doesn't have to, you can not multiply that, you're not looking for it. So this is a point of, of reference and concern as well for doing a new tax abatement.
Well, we're gonna be having a next discussion this year on tax abatement, so look forward to that. And, um, I'd like to thank those, hopefully Dr. Furlick here, who came yesterday, to our, um, celebrating on the birthday of Skylar Colfax. Thank, um, Deputy Mayor, um, Mark Neal for being there, and, um, Ms. Kelly also for being there also, our communication person, so thank you all, um, who have taken the time to plan the council, for making that an annual event for us every year. Yes.
Well, just one more comment about that labor industry. I believe the reason they came here, I talked to some people about it, that, uh, I have to know, is that, one, we had the building available, and, two, there is a labor shortage rate in the Goshen, Elkhart area, and we have a labor surplus, so that's one of the reasons we're there.
Oh, I'll, 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 oh, it's policy, I'm not saying it, I was just, we need, so.
Thank, great. Uh, any other final comments? Thank you. Let's move on to privilege of the floor, where everybody has, what, three minutes? And, um, Councilman Tim Scott, would you give us, um, this time?
Right.
Thank you. Something that was not on our agenda.
Good evening.
Good evening.
See policeman, five seven one one two, Peter Stone. First, I would, I have only two points unrelated to each other. The first is I'd like to commend the council and thank Mr. Shea for the presentation by a young woman from the, uh, Jewish Federation, and by the invocation provided by a rabbi. In the eighteen months that I've been attending regularly the council meetings, this is the first time I can remember a non-Christian invocation, and I would like to encourage the council to do more of those, as we certainly have more than just Christians in our community. The second item unrelated to that, is that I would like to point out that while we have Libra Industries who has been taking applications in Goshen, I would like to suggest that if the job is here in South Bend, that might turn those Goshen residents into South Bend residents.
Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak about something that was not on the agenda? Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you. Any direct? Could you hold on one second? Make sure it's a body, a factor, everything, and then once he, he has a seat, then we will go ahead and start, we start at three minutes, I've got that, so you have everything done, without interruption. Now let's start at three minutes.
I reside at two one seven, twenty-six seventeen West Preston Street. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, um, I have some information I need to present, but I'm going to need additional time. I'm trying to hold six minutes to grant that, or ask for that, if I'm here, if that's okay.
Anybody would like to, give a second? All opposed, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is carried.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, and as well as citizens of South Bend, um, last year I came to support you and I asked that anyone who was investigating regarding, um, the legitimacy of our former chief of police, Chuck Hurley. What I've presented before you, has documentation that are factual in terms of, um, what I found, what I want to share with you is this. The mayor, as the mayor, Mayor Booty Judge, as well as our former chief of police, Chief Curry, they broke the law. In fact, documents that he had to show that, they purposely broke the state law. Let me explain what I mean. When the mayor hired Chief Hurley as chief, first state law, it states that there are certain requirements that he has to, to go through to become a chief. One is he has to complete a decade session, and being out of police work for so long, he has to, um, complete what's called depression course. There's a state requirement for all police officers. Mayor knows that, chief knows that. If you look at the documents, you will see from the beginning that he was sworn in as chief, he attempted to get that stuff waived. He attempted that. All police officers, myself included, we have to get certain training, we have to complete that training. That includes chief of police. Chief Hurley decided that he was above the law. Mayor Booty Judge felt that he was above the law. They knew that he did not have requirements to maintain his duty as chief. The law states that you have a certain amount of time to get these things done. The law is clear, if you fail to get these things done, you are removed from that position as chief. The law is clear.
Mayor Booty Judge felt that he was above the law. They knew that he did not have requirements to maintain his duty as chief. The law states that you have a certain amount of time to get these things done. The law is clear. If you fail to get these things done, you are removed from that position as chief. The law is clear. If you look through the documents, you will see, especially on page ten, I remember them, ten, eleven, twelve. Go to page ten, really quick, you will see that Chief Hurley, former Chief Hurley, asked for an extension of the requirements the state says he must have to accomplish. If you look to pages eleven, okay, this is the letter I wrote requesting information to determine if he completed what the state law says he must complete. And if you look on page twelve, it's clear. This is actually letters from the, um, director of Indiana Long Course for Cadets, which states, you read it, in response to your letters referring to my letter, please be advised once again that you have received everything the ILEA has, has pertaining to your history request. You did not receive a copy of a letter of completion showing that former Chief Hurley successfully completed a refreshment course because we have no records that he completed it. This was from the director. Hurley did not complete what the state says that he's supposed to complete. Mayor Booty Judge knew that. He allowed Chief Hurley to continue on that path at the police office. He continued to wear a badge, he continued to guard a gun, he continued to drive a police vehicle. Even after the state law says if you do not complete these requirements, you must be removed. Our mayor broke the law. Our former chief broke the law. And he, and he tried to cover it up, but if you ask him about it, officer of the mayor would say, well, he was given a waiver by the executive director. Well, ladies and gentlemen, city of South Bend citizens, there are two parts. There's the, um, wait, I'm sorry, there's the executive training, and there's refreshment course. Chief received an extension for a waiver for the executive course. He did not receive a waiver for the, uh, eighty hour requirement. He did not. Said it right here. It's all proof, our mayor and our former chief of police both the state law, and he tried to cover it up. Proof is right here, ladies and gentlemen, it's right here. So what I did, I, not only that, I, I, um, contacted not only the Department of Justice, but the state police and asked them if they would do a formal investigation into this matter, and seeking that they, that they take the lead on this, because crimes were committed by our mayor. He knew this, okay? My request to you at the city council, this is my request from you, I request that you on the path of the citizens of South Bend, initiate a judicial investigation into our mayor, because there are crimes that he committed, and, and, that he committed, that he knew about. Citizens of South Bend should know what's going on, and that's my request from you. Thank you.
Oh, could you please fill out a form?
Yes, I have it right there.
Okay, Mr. Woody? And our attorney, who will review that matter, and give us a direction of how to go.
Hold on. Do you have a number? Do you think that went to our attorney, please?
We got it. Okay.
Alrighty, thank you. Boy signs, nine twenty-one West Colfax, and I apologize to Councilman Furlick, I am going to speak today. Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Davis. Uh, at a time that is challenging, you're leaving South Bend, surely making steps to improve and entice more economic fields rather than imposing more policy and bureaucracy that is tied to hands or dissuading investors to come to South Bend. If you don't have the talent and capable of the work to be accomplished, regardless of race, color, gender, creed, that burden should not fall upon the, um, the investor in free enterprise systems. The question is, does the council agree with that? The second question, as Congressman Davis last week, and Mr. Shabazz this week commented, the council here in South Bend is not being employed, then perhaps the council should work with, um, organizations that are looking for, uh, for our current state of South Bend's labor force in attracting outside investors, not just for the things that should, or hopefully will come out of, uh, the high-tech parks. County council and city has done a great job in working with the other university in town, Notre Dame, in its, in Eddie Street Commons, Innovation Park, in attracting and developing deals, uh, that allow opportunities for launching of new high-tech and high-skilled jobs. My second question is, what is South, what is this council doing to attract more companies and investors that are looking for the current state of our labor force?
Justin Davis, P.O., Box 205, South Bend, Indiana. Um, I just had a couple of questions, uh, maybe, uh, maybe the council might help me work into it. I brought some issues up about the sewer insurance program now for, uh, four years, and, uh, I was actually issued or sent a cease and desist letter from the city legal department, because we had city employees who are public workers out in the streets working, and I was told I can't sit down the street two blocks, wait and take photographs as evidence, uh, or take photographs or, or videotape, or anything, violate its First Amendment anyway. But this came right from your law department, and I filed some documents back in April of two thousand and ten. A month later, in May of two thousand and ten, some city people, Gary Delott, Sam Hensley, Kevin Dembrowski, John Pemberton, went into a board of public works meeting and tried to change the sewer ordinance, which was what I was, I complained about, and they wanted to know what they could legally change without having it rocked before the council. I've got this from their meeting here, that showed, showed that came in and spoke about this off the agenda, and they were told that they had to take it through a probationary period, and they had to announce it to the public and get public input. Now, this was in two thousand and ten, in May. July of two thousand and ten, in this cease and desist letter, which was a spirit factor, in the paragraph that's underlined, it says, "As you are aware, the city of South Bend has instituted a new sewer insurance program in an effort to save taxpayers' money." So that tells me in two thousand and ten that they've already implemented a, a new program, and it's underway, so on, so forth. That program didn't get implemented, so three and a half years later, in November of two thousand and thirteen, I gave you guys a copy of the twenty-three page. What is this, new agenda, a new sewer insurance program? So why did it take three and a half years for any of this to transpire? And why does it take so long for anything that's brought before this city, so long to be answered? There's so many things that are unanswered from last year's council meeting. When are we ever going to get answers?
Thank you. Woody?
Senator Brown. Representative Suits in the American League of Football. Uh, I can read that, nineteen seventy-six, New York, South Bend, Indiana, four six six three four. I'm glad now that, uh, Mr. Robinson, uh, Mr. Davis, the people that came was coming forth, uh, the citizens who tried to, uh, tell them to, uh, consider that in what we are getting. All those, uh, police tapes, we've chased them for a year, and then they had a holder, and then all into the United States, all kinds of courts, and citizens have paid our police a million dollars, and we still have no answers. Are we going to use the tapes? Nobody knows. But we took our tax money, and paid these people, and they said it was wrong for the job. I'm a taxpayer, I like to do what I pay it for. So is that. Now, we're going to see a while, and let the mayor of the city go down a lot, where he, where he goes, I don't know where he goes. We're not going to let that happen. And we're paying him to run this city, but you're not doing a very good job. So the next thing we're going to go, we're probably leaving out of office, seeing about a candidate that we feel beating up to run the city, and look out for all taxpayers.
Thank you. Anybody else? Saying none, the meaning is adjourned. Thank you.
Senator Brown.